On the video, it sure seems like you did a lot of random acts there. Thanks worth to you and others.
Alright, thank you guys. Alright, moving down into six point O finance. Six point one approve not approved resolution to accept donations. So all donations that we approve at school board need to be roll call vote. So six point one dot one, the Vernis Ladies Aid donation for the Maggleson Elementary Book Fair. We're looking for a motion or something and then it'll be a roll call vote. Have a motion and a second for the approval of the donation to elementary book fair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move into roll call. Director Christian?
Yes.
Director Dupont?
Yes.
Director Getch?
Yes.
Director Marcus?
Yes.
Director Munter?
Yes.
Director Nelson?
Yes.
Director Vosler?
Yes.
Alright. Seven dot O reports, elementary principal report.
Yes. No change from February, so stable. But now. Item number two, Maggleson Elementary Book Fair. If you look attached to, there's a flyer there. It's in the title of its book for every time, you can see the times listed there. And I know Joy and some volunteers, we had the, all the book fair materials delivered last Monday or Thursday. I can't remember one of the two days, but Thursday afternoon, they set up after school. A lot of volunteer work there. But a huge thank you off to Joy Sunbaum for all her work with us. And it's currently, I visited the book fair, obviously this morning. It's a great setup, great opportunity for our kids in our community. And all the long classes were visiting. We had that at when school dismissed, we had the whole type of community come to the meeting. And thirty minutes, you know what, I will send it Thursday is, it's open all week from eight to eight thirty and then three thirty five. And then only at Berkeley. Next item I have is our MTA testing schedule that is also attached. We begin testing up here in March, March thirty first, we'll have four graders. And then all of the third grade, fifth grade, sixth grade group B. And then we alternate math in there. So pretty much the whole month of April. We have some, or you can see math and reading testing went on. And then our science is scheduled, it's only fifth grade for science. That'd be twenty eighth through the second, so you can see our testing schedule there. So we're getting amped up for that, preparing for that. And like always, our kids, just encouraging them to get their rest after. Thank you for teachers for other. This is just one test in time and that's the way I look at it. But I'm confident our students will do well. Item number four, Minnesota Student Survey. This is, our fifth grade participated this year. Completed the survey on March thirteenth. The survey is given every three years. And it's voluntary. So you can have, you can opt out of that survey. But every three, three years is conducted to get some beneficial data through statewide. In regards to not only the makeup of our school, but the feedback is from the students of them as a state and as a reason. That took place again on the thirteenth. The next item I have there is Maggleson Elementary News Cast. Just some background, I did for it and we'll show a quick clip of it. It's six minutes long, if you want to watch all you can, but this is background information.
Sure.
Before, first I had a sixth grade student approach me and asked about doing a school news paper. And it has kind of evolved and we, I talked to Mr. Gerberud. I think there's an area school that also has a newscast. So with the help of Mr. Gerberud in our sixth grade class, we're able to put together a newscast. So usually every Monday morning, we do announcements, will be birthdays, any special announcements that may be taking place. We don't want to do that, our student leaders will do that, make those announcements. So with us talking to Mr. Gerberud, he applied for an FBA grant and put in video equipment, which we received. We're able to put into action here in the last few weeks. So big thank you to the Boston Education Foundation. And then the sixth grade class praised the news. So we have, we'll do birthdays, school activities, breakfast and lunch menus, weather, special events. And it's just a need process. This is our second newscast.
Is this, so it's once a week?
Yeah.
Once a week, okay.
Every Monday.
Every Monday.
Monday, the video is sent out to school.
That's good.
And it is, and like I said, this started with the sixth grade becoming key with SADP and this kind of expanded to where we're at. And with Mr. Gerberud, obviously with the STEM class that he teaches, this rolls into that. So it's part of the STEM classroom of sixth graders. And there's a rotation. You know, let's say some of the jobs, the reporters and directors, some engineers, writing specialists, video editor, teleprompter. So students have their roles for two weeks before they switch. That's, that's awesome.
Very cool.
That day. And the kids enjoy it, I'm sure it's, it was a lot of work for Mr. Gerberud upfront, but I'm sure the payoff and it's huge. So. So yeah, that's the newscast.
Speaking tied into the Garden Valley channel where games are played.
You know, that's a question, I'm not sure.
I'd rather watch that than talk. I think there's a lot of parents and grandparents who think it would be fun to. Yeah. People like that broadcast.
Oliver that goes out too on his social media.
Yeah.
It is on social media.
Yeah, and like on our Facebook. Well, I shouldn't say today, but last week when we first sent it out, because I had to approve what is sent out on our Facebook page. And then the link was sent for that, so I know it went on so, on social media. I'm not sure it's Monday, I'm sure it did. But yeah, it is just a great opportunity to involve so many more kids. This day experience of public speaking organization. There's, there's so many skills being taught. Yeah, very good.
Is that a real desk?
No.
Oh. So how are the kids, are they just sitting like this or something?
They're sitting at a table like you are right now.
Oh, okay. Technology.
But they have the clip, Eric, you notice they have a clip in there.
Yeah.
They've done a, I mean, obviously Mr. Gerberud as well, but the students have done a great job with even just the production value, the three weeks that they've done it now. Like the first one, there's no transitions, they're not speaking to introduce the next person. Like they're really taking it and running with it as cool.
Yeah.
Progression.
David Muir, watch out, right?
I mean, anxious, nervous upfront, but I mean, as they do at the game that experience, kind of like you notice when we have student leaders. They're, they're pretty savvy. They gave that experience and this is an opportunity for each kid's comfort. Obviously, if they're not comfortable being reported, but hopefully everyone gave them an opportunity, which I know they are.
Does everyone at the school watch at the same time? Not necessarily the same time, but. But in what you, yeah.
So usually Monday morning, the student here is still doing announcements, but then they'll make an announcement that the school news is now available on our YouTube channel. And then.
So.
And the question teacher, when they want to do it though.
Cool, cool.
Any questions in my report?
Thank you, Mr. Bushy. Alright, high school principal report.
Yes. Sorry enough with the numbers there as well. You can see there wasn't a change from the month of March to February. On Monday, we will have three new students enrolling. So we'll obviously be up on plus three on that. A little bit of curriculum update, again, we've been setting aside some time where our departments can get together. The social studies, English department, and they've been very productive in putting together a curriculum review, making sure that their curriculum that they're teaching is aligning with the standards. English standard will be changing here shortly. Also looking at some new sample materials throughout both departments, see what fits best for them. Tiffany Littman, the executive director from ESET, she's conducted an audit for the district. Make sure that we're complying with the number of case managers that we have to the number of students that are. Making sure that we're efficient in that manner. As Dan mentioned, MTA testing will get started here the last week of March. And as you run through the calendar, it goes all the way to that first week of May. Again, we're continuing on completing that master schedule for next year. And if you've been involved in our cap. Yet to this, and so. You know, throughout the course of the week, back in early daily and, and just going to take some baby steps as to where we're headed with this thing. But. You know, other things come to play once that happens and we can get moving much more quickly on completing that. And then lastly, again, of course, congratulations to Ellen. I just want to make note, you know, this is her second year as the advisor here at Boston. So that's a huge accomplishment on her part. And I have definitely seen a lot of progress being made with our student council from inward from our student council meetings to the projects. Things they're accomplishing. Those things, so. Just been a lot of great, great work for our student council and promoting it and getting that recognition throughout the area.
Questions for Mr. Danarski? Thank you. About three, superintendent's report.
Yeah, I did, I did not reduce anything to writing, but I do have a few highlights that I just want to share. Last week, Tuesday, the personnel committee met and we talked again about separation incentives. I've in turn connected, a second connection with the people that have initially showed some interest in this visiting about that. And I think that maybe Allison might share a little bit more about that when, when you guys give your reports. So that's moving forward. Again, I just would reiterate that we're looking to have everything around that and staffing and budget realignment, et cetera, done by the end of the month. Which may require a special board meeting, but at this time, we're not ready to schedule that. In that same vein, doing a lot of work on budget for next year and looking at current budget and, and, and really trying to forecast revenue and expenses for next year based on enrollment. Based on those things that we can nail down. They're not, we cannot nail down everything and therefore the budget is always. Don't want to say I guess, but it's our best guess. But there are moving parts that don't come into play until last minute. And just even most recently, we, we got it, it was a small amount. I don't know what if it was what nine thousand dollars, but just an adjustment in our title funding generated an additional like nine thousand dollars. We have those that happen, those types of things happen throughout the year. There are also things that happen the other way. Because of our VPK, that's voluntary pre kinder, or voluntary pre kindergarten funding. We, we were allotted thirty seats this year compared to twenty four last year. For those thirty seats, we get additional revenue. So there's, that's an uptick there. But another revenue stream that we would access to support that program, because more funding is coming for the VPK. We don't access a different level of funding that we were getting to support that. So that's a bottom wash. So there's just these moving parts that happen continually throughout the year. And Joan and I are working closely and she's sharing a lot of information with me so that I can better understand that, you know, even in year three, I don't have full, full knowledge of how all those pieces work. And just know that we're trying to fine tune that as best we can. So that here shortly, in the next month, as we close out the fiscal year, we'll have, we'll have numbers as tight as we can get them compared to where we're at for the year. Last Thursday, Crystal, myself and April went to MSBA workshop over in Erskine, which was highly valuable, great information. And maybe Crystal will speak about it late at, later in the agenda. But I know that April and I have talked about it on Thursday, we just talked again this morning about the value of that, that day. And really would encourage all of our. Board members at some point in time while they're in, while they're in their term to get to one of those really valuable, really good learning. Very well presented, but in a very casual way, where a lot of question and answer, a lot of laughs, a lot of examples of different, different things that are happening in different districts that would pertain to us. So that was well done and well received by ourselves. And then just lastly. You, you, you know that we pulled the Essentia agreement from the, from the agenda tonight and not because there's any huge red flags. And I want to make sure that you understand that overall, generally, the bigger picture of the agreement is still in place. And it's solid and it's sound. We did bring it to our legal attorney just for his eyes. And he just pointed out a few things that he thought we should change some wording on. And because of the short turnaround time, we did not have an opportunity to do that yet. So we will get that cleaned up. We did alert Essentia on Friday that we would need to pull it from our agenda, not approve it tonight, or not bring it to you for approval. They're fully aware, they're not, they're not overreacting or anything as well. They understand, certainly they have lots of attorneys that look over their stuff and behooves us to do the same thing. So again, the spirit of the agreement is still in place. We just had to work out some, some word, do some wordsmithing of the, of the agreement so that it satisfies, so that we protect, protect ourselves. And not that they were trying to get a corner on us or an edge on us or anything, but just, I understand contract. I mean, I don't understand it. Our attorney understands contract language and thinks we should make some changes. So that would be the extent of what I have to share tonight.
Any questions, Mr. Salk? Thank you. Eight dot O personnel, eight point one approved not approved resignation of Joan Nelson as finance manager, July thirty first, twenty twenty five. In the packet, they'll find her resignation.
Yeah, and if. If you were not to accept this, I would do that. I, I don't know, I don't know. I couldn't be here sitting in front of you today without joining where she's been for the two and, two and three quarter years that I've been here. So it is certainly with the reservation that we, that we accepted, but certainly with a lot of gratitude that we do accept this. And I would recommend that we accept it tonight. If you note that, that what's interesting or what's notable is the date. And that is a, that would be a month into the new fiscal year. Joan will see us through the, the audit in June, which will be really important. And then will stay with us a month into the new fiscal year. And is very willing to help in any way transition beyond July thirty first as well. We would need to write up some type of an agreement with her to, to, to use her services to help the new person in place. But yeah, she's just, what a tremendous employee, what an asset to the district. Couldn't be more happy for her though, that she has earned her opportunity for retirement. And I know that she's looking forward to it. She also is concerned about missing out on the friendships and the relationships that she's established here in the district as well. But we wish her very well and certainly would urge you to accept the resignation.
Any idea in terms of how soon we're looking to finally post?
Yeah, so eight point one point five, which is the next item that is not showing on yours, but was written in to begin with. We will post the position. I want to meet, or I want to think about a few things and I've been thinking about a few things of how we'll post the position. But my hope would be that we would have a overlap of at least two months. Last, like June and July, maybe even May, June and July, where we would overlap the new person with, with Joan still be heading us. Yep, yep.
Making motion to approve the resignation of Joan Nelson.
Would you give me a second to accept the resignation of Joan Nelson?
The thing that I would add, Mr. Chair, is that there will be a recognition of Joan at some point later in the year. It will be more than just. From, from today. Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Yeah.
Alright, eight point one dot five, approval to post a position for finance manager. This was added to the agenda in the meeting.
Do what?
And there, or he shall. We have a motion in the second to post the position of finance manager. Any further discussion?
We have a, I don't believe I made, we have a day. I mean, do you have any days in mind like?
For what?
Like interviews, like.
No, I mean.
Yeah, I would definitely agree that as soon as that person is in.
Yeah.
May, if you've been, end of April is possible, so he can spend as much time.
Right.
With Joan and she can.
We will get it posted very soon and, and obviously put a job description with it. I want to look more, real closely at what we have for a job description. I've looked at it a little bit, but. We just got this, I mean, I think there was speculation we were going to get it, but it's, we got it. You know, we didn't get too far ahead of ourselves. So now that we have it and we're acting on it tonight, we'll move pretty swiftly. So, yeah, I, I, I think the sooner the better. We're not going to post it forever. Couple of weeks probably is all we'll need to do, get the interviews in place, hopefully select somebody. And then, you know, likely that person will be leaving a position. So there'll be some time for that person to do that. But if we could have someone in place by end of April, first of May, that would be a strong goal. Yep.
Seem attainable?
Yeah, it does. Right, yeah.
Other districts have gone through this, how long before they feel they've found a sol?
They are, they are, but I think it's a desirable position too. Yep, I think it's a real desirable position. So I think we'll have some interest.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Eight dot two, approved not approved resignation of Mary Hansen as part-time coral professor.
This is the second go round for Mary to retire and she's tough. Is retiring. We cannot twist that arm anymore. It's twisted up. So again, just a great employee at the district for many years. She left us and actually was so willing to come back to help jumpstart the coral program again. And has done that, done that marvelously so. But she is as well looking forward to full time retirement, traveling, et cetera, with her husband. And this would be. And this would be her official retirement for sure.
Official final retirement. We have a motion in the second to approve the resignation of Mary Hansen. Any further discussion? Absolutely. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Congratulations to Mary as well. All right, nine dot O educational discussion update on the Read Act.
So the Read Act is a state mandate that was approved in the last legislative session. And. Obviously, all around the the concept of literacy and the shared responsibility of literacy throughout the entire district. Throughout K twelve, throughout all content areas. And. In order to be to meet that stat state statute now and that that requirement. We have to offer training to our staff to reach some level, some threshold of. Of expertise in order to deliver literacy throughout the district. It's phased in and I'll ask Dan to jump in when needed here. And to correct me if I misspeak, because Dan has been most involved with it because it's starting with K. Three, one, three. Pre K three. In in what's called phase one of the Read Act. And it's pre K three through third grade staff. All K through twelve sped, special education staff that teach reading. Which includes Don, two teachers at the high school level. Is that correct? Yep, and then all of our reading interventionists, which is another name for title, our title teachers. And also American Indian teacher will be trained. So that's what phase one training is. Those people, there will be a phase two training, which will include the rest of our staff at a later date. Very likely next school year. So in order to get that training, which is a hundred and sixty eight hours, I believe. We needed to. Find time to do that and pay our staff to do that. We are allotted a revenue source from the state to help offset the training. Expenses that we will have in training our staff. It is not enough money to train our staff entirely outside of the school day. Districts have have. Many districts started their training a year ago. There was no deadline for us to start. In fact, then we actually got an extension. And not just Floss and many schools got an extension. I'll I'll say this and I don't. I don't want to underestimate nor. Neglect the the importance of this. But it was a typical state mandate that was not fully thought through, not fully funded, an unfunded mandate. And the cart got before the horse a little bit. So because of that, they slowed down the state requirements of when to have this done. When we saw that slowing down, we we inched as well. And we would be starting our training a year later than some schools, but probably in the norm of. Many schools, starting in year two. We have two years to get this completed. So with all that background. No, phase one means the number of people, the training is all complete. Phase one is this group of people, phase two is this group of people. This people group of people in phase one will start and end this year. Or excuse me, next year. In one year. And then after that, we would. So twenty five, twenty six, twenty six, twenty seven.
We have two years in phase one.
It's, yeah, no, phase one is is not the train. The training is the training.
We have two years to finish the group of phase one.
Okay, so with all that background and the funding source that we have. And a real reach out by our education association to the members of their association. And similar to most districts in the state. We are proposing a hybrid model of some of the training happening within the contracted date. And some of the training happening outside of the contracted date. In order to do that training with within the contracted day. We need to have opportunity to for our teachers to do that without students around. So as we give that background of the Read Act, that. Moves us into the twenty five, twenty six calendar, which will highlight the Read Act days within the calendar. But before we get to that calendar, just any general questions, comments about Read Act? Dan, anything to add? How much underfunded? Well, well, it's. If if we were completely outside of the district training, we'd be. We were allotted forty thousand, I think we ran some numbers, it would be probably double that.
There is some in person training that goes along with this, so we have portion of the training, which is about twenty four, twenty four hours each year. Over forty eight hours, that's within a hundred and sixty eight. All that actually other time, like work prior to the in person is about twelve hours. Before each in person session. So that's you'll see that reflected on the on the calendar. So teachers work independently. There's a kickoff. And we have a regional person kind of do the kickoff for us. We'll go through the materials. Teachers will have a better understanding when they start. Imagine you finish before the next in person training. So it's it's intense and per Read Act, we're going with letters. Science of reading is the training over safety and option of three different vendors, so.
This is considered. Continuing ed.
Certainly would be continuing ed. We we'll use some staff development dollars, yep. So a- after, excuse me, not not necessarily after. In conjunction with this, we'll have to do a memorandum of understanding with the EA around payment. To the people that participate for those hours outside of the contract. And in having conversation with the EA and and I'm very appreciative of the fact that. We're willing, they're willing to approve a calendar prior to the MOU. Once calendars approved, we will begin work and actually we've had some early discussion. I see Lawrence here tonight. We actually had some discussion today, but the education association. And the administration will work on an MOU that we bring before the board for approval for those hours outside of the contract day. So really, no, no action on nine point one, other than sharing information, Mr. Chair. And then we would roll into ten point.
Any other questions on the Read Act? To move down to ten point one, approved, not approved, the twenty five, twenty six calendar is senior.
We have a calendar committee. And that calendar committee met twice here in the last couple of weeks. In conjunction with the calendar committee, we also brought in Mr. Holbert, the head of the education association. Who had met, he and Mr. Bushy have met multiple times regarding the Read Act. And the time needed to deliver that training for our staff. Dan, I'm going to let you explain the training days and how they're reflected in the calendar, if you would.
Yeah, there's there's four in person training dates. That we have scheduled. First one is September tenth. And they're highlighted in blue, like if you look at August twentieth, that's an hour kickoff and then there's six hours of work time. And then there's some other hours incorporated into our in service for that week of August. September tenth is an in person training. Then you can start seeing Wednesday, October first. The first Wednesday of every month except for December and January thereafter. You'll see that as designated Read Act time. So we have, we're in person, I'll go back to that, September tenth, November fifth, February fourth. And April fourteenth. I have that rate.
And define what you mean by in person training.
That that's when through the Northwest Service School, we had choice, either we could take some locally or within the region. Or we take a national instructor, which would be all virtual. Obviously, we're going to choose the in person. And that person will be on site here with our pre K through third grade teachers and then also our interventionist going through. The proper training for letters. And like I said, those will happen for those sessions. The the total amount of Read Act days, like I said, there's some, even in yellow ones, after development days. We also have a lot of sometimes, but the blue are the main designated days just for Read Act. And it would be no school.
That's very long ago.
Okay, on those days, on those Wednesday days, there'll be no school for pre K through third grade. We would have grades four and six in session. On those days.
And seven and six twelve. Seven twelve.
Yeah, so four through twelve will be in session.
We're actually on minutes, but not less than hundred and sixty five days. So we have one seventy one minus six and actually elementary is less than hundred and sixty five days. So we make that criteria. High school, of course, was not affected at all because they would be in their hundred and seventy one days. Their criteria is minutes as well, but it's X amount of minutes less than and not less than hundred and sixty five days. So we're covered there. Let me just add a few things to what Dan has said. So as far as what kind of training is happening, I don't know that that's all that. You don't need to know exactly what's happening on each of those days, other than the fact that those days are dedicated to the Read Act. And really what we want you to see on the calendar more than anything, it's that there are six days. September ten, October one, November five, February four, March four, and April one. Where there will not be school for those K pre K through three students. The other days that we do some Read Act training. Could be April, excuse me, August twentieth is a day. So that would be one of the days outside of the contract that we're going to compensate our staff for. Some other days that there will be training, but it will be within the contract are some of our professional development days. If you add all that up over two years, we're going to get to the hundred and sixty eight hours. The rest of the calendar is identical. To la- to the current year we're in right now, literally identical, other than right around Christmas. We're going to go to school or what we're proposing is to go to school Monday, Tuesday, twenty second, twenty third. And then not come back until January fifth, because January second, the day after New Year's, is a Friday. But as far as the the the, you know, the the bigger picture of the of the calendar. It would be identical to this year, ending on May twenty second with graduation that night. And then one staff day the day after Memorial Day, as it is this year.
So then the thought moving forward with this being a two year training is following your calendar would be very similar to this.
It would be unless we get into a year of it and just say this didn't work or we need to tweak it a little bit, you know, potentially. So we're not asking for approval of the next calendar year yet, but very, very likely it would look pretty similar. And just again, how we build the calendar. The calendar committee is staff members. Two teachers, two principals, myself and Ryan Hanlon, activities director. And the two staff members are charged with seeking input from their respective group, which they do. And this is the the. The will of the people per se.
Pretty impressive to do it.
I know it. There is a little work done ahead, you know, in outside of the meetings, I'll say, but quite a bit of work by Dan and Jonathan. Regarding the Read Act, but. We still have, you know, the E days, yep. It doesn't blizzard in Minnesota.
Do you know, I think I heard that Bagley did something similar to this, where they had certain groups. Of grades didn't have class, but the rest of the. You did you have gotten any feedback from how that went with your parents?
We're cognizant of that very much because we know that having some of our students in school and some of our students out of school. Could pose issues for families. We we understand that. I know that what we've talked about more at the high school, but but even in the upper grades at the elementary. We need to be flexible with our families in that regard. If a family is going to say to us, hey, my junior boy has to stay home because, you know. That will be looked on differently as far as absenteeism than maybe it would be otherwise. Maybe than how it's been in the past. We're really caught between a rock and a hard place. It's a state mandate that we have to follow. And yet, on the same token, if we took all these days off for everybody, we don't have. I shouldn't say that because we probably always could find something, but but we don't need six additional days. For professional development at high school. We need our kids at school. That's more important, we believe. So it's not ideal for those pre K through third grade. We understand that. On the same token, we need to legislatively, we need to meet the requirements.
Taking all of June to come in and do this.
Overwhelmingly, and Jonathan told me this morning, Jonathan, I. Typically, we meet Fridays before a board meeting, but we met today because there wasn't school on Friday for him. But he told me eighty seven point five percent of the teachers polled wanted to do as much. Inside the contract as possible. And quite honestly, we don't have the financial or we wouldn't want to take on the financial burden of doing it all outside as well. So this really falls in line with really what. Most of the districts that have started are doing this combination like you're like you referenced vaguely. But I know that Ada is doing it that way and.
The Read Act, do they give any guidance on implementation or they just kind of went?
No, that was part of the issue.
I've heard discussions about the calendar in the past, it's overwhelming. Committee has done on that and I may motion to approve the calendar for coming here.
Have a motion and a second to approve the twenty five, twenty six calendar is presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that support. We appreciate that. Where are we at here?
All right, moving down eleven point O reports. I've been promised two reports. I've been promised two reports, one from Director Marcus, one from Director Munter, so who wants to go first?
I concern. Um, so as Superintendent Selk had mentioned, we had a personnel committee meeting, uh, last Tuesday. We've actually had two since our last meeting. Um, the first one, there was, it was brought up that there was some interest in early retirement. So upon our direction. Um, so to see what that interest was. And then last Tuesday was us hearing the results of that, that inquiry. And then, um, as Superintendent Selk had mentioned, then we kind of gave the hallmark of going back and asking some more information. So, um, that's kind of where we're at now.
So, as Mr. Selk said, on last Thursday, we had an MSBA, um, meeting in Erston. In the morning, we had a lot of good conversation with other area schools that were there also. Um, in the afternoon, we had breakout sessions of the chair, clerk, and treasurer, and I thought, okay, you know, I was going through all the treasury, like page by page of what, you know, we're supposed to be doing. And I thought, huh, Jonah's all dead, so nice. And then every minutes later, and I'm like, oh, man.
We're gonna propose a halftime business director, because our treasurer's gonna take care of all those things, yeah, yeah.
But yeah, it was a great meeting and lots of great information.
And I think, I think going forward, I think it will be good for the treasurer to spend some time with the business director on a more regular basis. And actually clerk in, in April attended the clerk's session, uh, because she would work closely with the, whoever the clerk is. And then, uh, I stayed and attended some of the chair stuff, um, as well. Um, but that's typically, you know, that, yeah, that relationship as well. So, you know, we kind of have a point person in the system to, to do the work, the majority of the work. But certainly in a involvement from the school board members, um, in relation to the positions they hold. Um, I just think it makes more knowledge is for everybody. So, look forward to that, and, and we'll look for another opportunity for that. Um, in fact, April is going to, she'll keep an eye on that with the MSBA. And I'm not, you know, it, it didn't work for a couple of board members. There was some communication issues around that. And, and quite honestly, this was the training that we thought we had. Then we canceled it because they said there weren't enough of us signed up. Then it was Saint Cloud, then it was all of a sudden was back on, and the actual date never got communicated very well until it was oh, here's tomorrow's agenda.
Right, according to this meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, so, um, we'll look for another opportunity for that. And, uh, and, and get our other two officers onto that as well.
I just wanna echo what Crystal said. I attended the same training two years ago and went to the clerk breakout session. And I found the same thing that I thought it would be valuable for our, for April to come to. It's a lot of what she does, but it's, quote unquote, my job, so.
No, she, uh, I know that it was very worthwhile. And really, the morning was illegal. Um, Terry Morrow was there. The legal guy for MSBA. And I happen to be the only superintendent there, so I got picked on quite a bit, but, uh, it was all good fun. And just a lot of good back and forth. Ada was there, fertile, our, um, Winnie Mac was there, Menomen was there. Crookston. Barnsville, yeah, they were furthest away. So we were getting good dialogue back and forth with different districts.
About an hour in, we're still on the very first slide. That seems like Terry.
Yeah, also, not forget, after the personnel meeting, personnel maybe meeting, Jason Sletz from ISCS came up. Um, kind of one of the few of the existing OFM plan, uh, went over some expenditures. Um, from the current year, I'll look at, uh, some pricing for some future OFM items. Jason was gonna follow up on several of those.
We just got some stuff on that. I'll share that with you.
There's a little short discussion about some possible legislation changes that would allow us to levy for roof repairs, which would be nice. That's, hasn't happened yet, but, uh, something the legislature is looking at. Um, yeah, knows about it.
I got some pricing on the, some things that Jason chased after the meeting, and I'll just share that with you. With everyone on the committee as well. We just got it today.
All right. Thank you for those reports. Any other reports? All right, twelve point oh, additional comments.
Yeah, two. First one's quick, I'll bring my first one to second. Two minutes, two weeks, and took your back on the grant applications that were submitted by uh, school district, Lions Club, and Boston Storages Club, uh, requesting funding to uh, support our directory for brands that would be directed solely through our elementary and high school system. Second one, maybe this is the one that could be brought up to, uh, leadership teachers. The line of work that I've worked in throughout my career, we've learned a lot from industry leader named Milliken, a lot of people don't know of them, but all the products that we buy and use today, they've had their hands on it, the development of it. Uh, collaboration of getting it out throughout the industry. And one of the things we took away from that company that was last, I was called cross-linking, and essentially what it was doing was taking a satellite outreach for like, for example, with our teachers, I know they've been a while in their place, but there'd be interest from them. If we reach out to other districts that would be in an area that's unrelated to ours, so not like a neighboring school district, but per se. Maybe a suburban school district out of the Twin Cities, where we can give those opportunities for the teachers to, to get together, satellite. Uh, be a team's call or something, and connect around, hey, how are things going for you in, in third grade, science, seventh grade now? Thanks, Fire. What are some things you're working on? What are some things that are doing really well for you? And what are some things that you can help on? It's just that ability to kind of clarify shots across the wall. Uh, for people that are doing the same type of job in a different field, in, in game, tips and pointers, and share that within the industry. Last, since we came, we had a gal, Heather Burt, who's a fire teacher on the Mac. She came and presented, you know, some stuff that she's done, shape program and that. And that was just another example of creating that opportunity for people to kind of pick each other's brains on, on how they're presenting uh, the curriculum or ideas that seem like, hey, we're really getting better response from students by doing it this way. And for those that are struggling, maybe here's another way of presenting, just an opportunity for them. And even if it's thirty minutes once a month, or once a quarter, you know, that they can interact with another peer teacher from a different school district. Um, maybe curious to see if there's interest in that, be happy to facilitate some of the school districts, you know, I mean, we talked about that at MSBA, and we're getting together and having those same conversations to to learn and understand, how to learn, how to use similar.
Um, you and I should meet and talk about that more deeply, and then we can bring it to leadership, et cetera. And Allison actually sits on leadership committee, so we, we can link her into that, cross-link her into that as well. The, the only thing, uh, Mr. Chair, that I would say is, is we move on to thirteen point one, April twenty-first is Easter Monday. There is no school that day. It's not a national holiday. So just for consideration, would the board want to move to the twenty-eighth? Um, for the next board meeting. That would be my only comparison.
So, April twenty-eighth, we host our invite track meet in Bagley. I'd be really optimistic to be done by six.
No, he won't be. The twenty-first? Would there be any thought to doing it the Monday before, the fourteenth?
Save a full text deadline.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
She'll be, she'll be neck deep in paperwork.
She'll be filing my extension. On her screen. Um, so, you know, the twenty-first is fine, but actually, we have a member that's gonna be gone.
So the, do you say Wednesday? Wednesday, the.
That way, we'd keep it in the same, we'd keep it in the same week. Uh, it's after Easter, obviously, so that's why, um, so Lent, of course, would be completed, yeah. That, that seems like a good compromise.
To Wednesday, the twenty-third?
You get on the calendar, ever. Probably need motion for this.
So, I guess we'd be looking for Wednesday, on Wednesday, the twenty-third. Motion in the second for moving the next regular board meeting to April twenty-third at six P M, high school conference room. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Six o'clock as well.
Six o'clock. All right, motion in the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Clear the curtain at seven to twenty.
Good meeting, good meeting.